One nation, under God, indivisible, with the heart of a justice for all.
The Chair recognizes City Manager Shepard to facilitate the oath of office portion of our council meeting.
Mayor and Councilor McGinnis, please come up front.
Notary. Notary Danny Tanner will lead you in.
Give me your right hand, please. Your feet after me. I, me, you solemnly swear.
I, Mr. McNeely, you solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
I will support the constitutions.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the charter.
And the charter.
Ordinances and rules.
Ordinances and rules.
Of the city of Rockaway Beach.
Of the city of Rockaway Beach.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the, of that to which I have been duly appointed.
Of that to which I have been duly appointed.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Cheek, oh, thank you very much. All right, time for roll call. Counselor Cheek.
Here.
Counselor Gregory. Counselor Hayes. Counselor Martine.
Here.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yeah.
And Mayor McNeely is present. You have before you the consent agenda on the approval of the meeting minutes for council workshop on Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Council meeting on Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the December twenty-two check register. The minutes of the previous meetings and check register were distributed beforehand. May I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion to approve the regular meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the workshop of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the November two thousand twenty-two check register. Okay, seven check register.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that the council approves the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. In the ears of the Chair, the ayes have it. All right, the Chair recognizes Scott Fragonecy, our city planner, who will discuss the Three J Consulting's Housing Needs Analysis Proposal. Please hold your questions to the end of his presentation.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to speak about this tonight. This is very similar to the presentation that I gave to the council back in September last year, where we were discussing some tools that we could potentially use to look at our future housing needs in Rockaway. Since then, I've been working with Lou to put together a scope of work to do that, to start that process. So that's what we have proposed tonight. So I'm basically going to go through the steps of what that scope of work would do and what the data that it would provide the city wants that project is. So do a quick presentation, and then we will allow you to ask any questions. Um, you'll, it's not working. I can just off switch on the side. Yep, that's what it is. You're gonna turn it on. So you'll refer to an HNA, which is just a national housing needs analysis. But it's basically one of the components the city needs to consider to satisfy its housing needs for its future residents. So how much future housing need based on population growth for the next one? It's both a product and a process. The process will be public involvement, and it will be through the planning commission as the steering committee. And it's really, again, to determine the need of the current inventory, so what we have in terms of our current housing inventories. And then what we need in the future, while identifying billable lands by type as well through this process. The components of the housing analysis are kind of four whole things. It's a housing needs projection, so that's projecting what you need. Billable lands inventory, what is your billable land inventory? How much do you have as your type? And then the residential land needs analysis, looking at does your, what you have match your need? And then also have some policy recommendations that'll say, these are some things you need to do to address if we find that there's a lack of a certain type. The recommendations on potentially zoning changes or policy changes to try and fix those mismatches in your housing. So the first thing that I mentioned was housing needs projection. So this is really just looking at your forecast in terms of your long-range planning for housing over the next twenty years. So how much is Rockaway going to grow? And then that's translated into housing units by type. So that's the first step. And that would be the first step in the process. And the next one would be, well, this is just an example. So I just want to mention that I've done, my firm has done seven of these this year. We did Cambie, Minket City, Millersburg, Non-Angel, Sweet Home Winston, Cascade West, Council of Governments. So you'll see slides from Sweet Home today, particularly because I just finished up this project. So this would be kind of your first thing, looking at what your population growth, and Sweet Home was about fifteen hundred people over the next twenty years. If I were to guess, the growth rate in Rockaway is not huge for permanent residents. I would, I would guess they're going to probably be about six to eight hundred over twenty years. My, my, off the top of my head, guess what we shall see as we get through this process, but it really is. Excellent. Then this is an example of the projected housing needs. So once you turn that fifteen hundred people into households, the projected need was about six hundred and thirty-two thousand units. And then you can also see by type. So it does it by single-family homes, townhomes, and mobile family, and manufactured homes as well. So what the analysis will do will break down that future need based on population. The next step will be the billable lands inventory, and this is kind of the mapping piece. This is my favorite piece, where we look at the capacity within the land of Rockaway to accommodate forecasted housing and housing needs over the next twenty years. So how much land is vacant? How much land is partially vacant? How much land is constrained from development for many reasons? And, and then also by type. So it's pretty important. You need to know what you have to be able to see if you have enough for your future demand. I should have brought the map down, but I found in the light of the last inventory, I think it was from before, it was done in two thousand and seven. So we know a lot of growth and development has happened in Rockaway since two thousand and seven. So it probably makes sense, you know, what, now fifteen years later, to take a second look at the billable land inventory. And then I mentioned constraints factor, we need to go to the next one. Part of the thing we're going to be looking at is just floodplains. The next one, I believe, is steep slopes. And the next one, wetlands. So those are all constraints to development. So when you're looking at what is billable land, you need to know whether it really is buildable, or if there's something there that's keeping that land from built being constrained and being built. So then what you do is after you've got the constraints, you come up with what those billable lands are. So this is an example again of Sweet Home. And they have, I can't see that, but they have, you can see it's broken up by acreage and by color. So I believe the brown is vacant, and the orange is partially vacant. And the purple is redevelopment. So that's another interesting thing that will come out of this process. We'll identify parcels that could be potentially used to be redeveloped. And then again, you can look at it by zone type, because that's really important, too. If it's vacant, that's great, but what's the zoning? Because that's going to dictate what is able to be built on that land. So you need to know how much of each zone you have. And here in Sweet Home, again, they have a lot of their billable land is in single-family residential, which actually worked out well for them because that's the majority of their demand as well. And then after you've complete the projection and the billable lands inventory, you have to look at how much land the city will need. So that's the next piece. It's the residential land needs analysis. And that's kind of a reconciliation of the data that you found before. And, and so the findings here were that the supply was generally sufficient to accommodate twenty years housing need. They had a lot of vacant land. They had nine hundred, a surplus land of nine hundred and twenty-nine acres. There's a lot. That's not going to be the case here, I can tell you that already. But that'll be a finding that we come up with. And then we'll say, well, here's how many of each type you need. And so I think it's, what's that, eight? Eight, nine, five, or something, still five residents, one hundred and twenty-four townhomes and mobile family. And so break it down by, by the future need. And basically make sure that we have enough land in the right zoning categories to meet that, that need. If we don't, there's going to be some serious chink we're going to have to look at potentially, you know, maybe rezoning. Sometimes these things will lead to urban growth boundary expansions for more land. Now, in our case here, urban growth boundary is very difficult just because of the geography. You know, we're kind of stuck from expanding on both east-west, north-south. There might be some little areas where you could be expansion, but I don't see that as where this is going to lead us. I think that this is going to give us information about how much housing we have and how tight we have, what we need to do to make sure we have enough. And then again, I mentioned this, but again, I think the most important thing about this is it identifies some things that need to change and make recommendations. About policies and code changes. But this is again, to run down those steps. The housing needs production, then the billable lands inventory, the residential land needs analysis, and then some measures to accommodate that, which is the recommendations. And I highlight those four steps because in the scope of work, we are going to have a committee meeting on each of those four steps. So right now, I'm going to go to the next slide. Right now, we're assuming that the planning commission will serve as a steering committee for this, this effort. So as part of that, four of the planning commission meetings, we would have a portion of planning commission meetings that would be dedicated to the committee, steering committee part for the housing needs analysis. There'd be a specific agenda item in the planning commission meetings. And these meetings are open to the public, and I think I propose that we have a public comment period as part of the committee meeting process. So there'd be more chances for public to come in and learn. And the cool thing is, when you go through these steps, it's kind of bite-off chunks. So we'll look at the projection, and we'll look at the billable land inventory. So it's kind of, the way the products roll out fit well with four meetings. And then I've also put in there two meetings, one with planning commission and one with councils for adoption. If the city so decides to adopt this as a formal document. I think that's it.
Council members, any questions for?
I have a couple. I, I know our needs was unique here because we have so many short-term rentals. As you're looking at our current stock, I think is the way you worded it, does that take into consideration how many short-term rentals we have? And if our short-term rentals don't grow as much in the future, how is that factored in?
So it doesn't, if we will identify short-term rentals, the cool thing is now that we have registration, we already have that data. I want, I want to map that data as part of this process so we know where they are. And I think what we can, the neat thing about this, we can do it, we can pretend like our housing stock is all one. But we can also remove the short-term rentals from the housing stock calculation and take a look at it that way as well. So that could, that's not typically done in these, but it's a unique situation here that I think we should, we should take a look at as part of the process. So I don't, the second part of your question where you're saying, well, if we don't grow, we'll, we'll, we can make some assumptions, I suppose. And if you, if the percentage of short-term rentals grew, that would be, and you pulled that out of what you considered your housing stock, how that would affect it. So there's some ways, I'm not exactly sure if I can answer your question perfectly, but I think we definitely need to fix that in consideration. The other thing we were talking about, looking at those, like the constraints. For example, wetlands always debated in this because you can mitigate wetlands. So a lot of times when you do these, some people say, well, that's not developable because of wetland. Well, is it or isn't? You know, if you can mitigate it, it could potentially be developable. But if you remove that land from your billable land inventory, it might show that you have a lot less land, which means you need more land or other land. So it'd be, it'll be interesting to kind of turn on and off some of those constraint layers and see how that affects the, the billable land inventory.
Much like short-term rentals, we have vacation homes here.
Yes.
Will you treat them in a way that helps us really understand what we end up with in terms of dwelling units available to either owner occupied or full-time renters?
So that's a really tough one. And it's mostly because it's hard to have, to find, to have accurate data on what a second home is. So if it's not, luckily we have, anything that's registered as a short-term rental, we can identify and know that. It's much harder to find accurate data on what is a second home. You know, it, it potentially could be done, but I, it's not proposed to do that as part of this process. We could make some assumptions. If we could say, well, this percentage of them, we assume to be second homes, this would be the effect on your, your need or your, or your stock, right? So we could potentially do that. And I don't want to promise that just because I don't know if it can.
Understand.
I have two.
Sure.
So in your list of homes and things, I didn't see ADUs. And you and I have talked about you on the previous, like, we don't have big ADUs.
Yeah, and that's another one, too, where I think it's, it's finding the data for how many, you know, we don't know, I don't know how many ADUs the city has.
Right.
So we could, we could look at that. And I think there are, the interesting thing about ADUs in Rockaway is I, I have, we've only had AD ordinance on the books for maybe two years now. A little over two years. So I think maybe we've gotten one permit since we had it on the books. Now, that's not to say there are ADUs that are already there, well, prior to the ordinance being placed. So that's another one where it's like, we could, we have to figure out how to, how to locate where all the ADUs are. You can actually make assumptions in the forecasting for ADUs. They might come under, I think they fall under college homes, manufactured homes, and other in the, in the analysis, but I suppose you could break those up further if you really want.
So I noticed that it was colleges.
Yeah.
And I'm not so interested in what I have exactly now, but I do think that looking forward, it is something we used to do. We were built, we had little mother-in-law cabins, or, and for me, adding those to our properties adds a whole bunch of housing, and it allows you to live with family or college kids to live with family, and so.
I agree. I'm going to be building one in my yard for my home.
Yeah, yeah, right? And, and we actually, in planning, we, we tried to steer away from people during that here. We actually made a, a decision not to allow twenty-five-foot lots or little tiny homes. And if you drive down six, you'll see little cabins, or behind my office, there's little cabins. And I think that's part of the looking field of Rockaway. And so I'd like us to encourage that.
Yeah.
And they're less expensive, you know, if there's only one person using the water and electricity and.
And some, like Portland actually incentivizes ADUs. They will, if you, if you sign a ten-year covenant agreement that says you're not going to use it as a short-term rental, you're going to have someone long-term rental or family living in it, they waive the STC, the system development charter as well. So there are, there's, there's interesting tools that lots of cities use if you really want to go down that path, encouraging them, within six.
I really do. I know I'm one council person, and that's, that's something that has to come from all of us, but that's something I would really like to visit. I believe we're not getting applications for permits because we, we haven't done something like that. And I think if we did, we'd see a, a lot more here. I know for sure in my field, you know, yeah.
And I actually put together the code when we, when we did that. And looking back at it, there's probably some things that I would, like, there's, there's some things that make it more difficult than I think it should be in our current ADU code. Particularly the location and size. There are a couple changes that I would say. And I think we did that, we were doing it in the planning commission, you did it, we were trying to be sensitive about, you know, they have to be behind the house. Does it really matter if it's next to the house? I don't know. Anyway, there's some, there's some things that we, if, if you want to start encouraging, I think we can take a second look at that code line.
I have another question, a comment, a question, I guess. I know that the professional planners will actually do the analysis, but what is the role for the planning commission as the steering committee? What will be expected of the planning commission?
Good question. So one example is available lands inventory maps. I want them all to review those maps and say, this isn't right, this is actually not big. Or, you know, because we're, it's GIS data, it's, it's, you know, electronic mapping that we're using data, and it's not always that. So that's one thing is to check our work. Put more markup apps, for example. When it gets to the policy recommendations, we'll work with the planning commission to make sure that they actually match what they feel like desires and likes, so that, you know, they're not negative. Recommendations that may solve the problem, but might not be something that works well for this in progress. So a couple of that is, they'll, they'll give you feedback. The first part, when we do the production, there's not much feedback, it's more information. So some of, probably two of the meetings are going to be more input, and two of them will be more information. The first one and the third one will be information, second, fourth one.
Anybody in the audience have questions? Yes, in the back there. Sir, I'll get the person over there.
Two questions, Mr. President. Thanks for joining. I noticed one more, the ten-year plan, it didn't include, it said, doesn't include housing. So I would wonder about that, because of course we have.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's, I think we did, I did a permit for demolition of a manufactured home or replacement of a manufactured home. It's, it does that because we're not, we're assuming that the current housing stock will, we're not counting that as, you know, basically, someone's been demolished, and we're, we're considering that housing stock can just be continuation of the housing stock. So we don't want to include that. It's our future, in, in our future forecast, it's used to filling that need because it's already existing.
Okay, that the house is existing even though it's not a household.
Yes, yes, exactly. House is existing, and then, but we don't want to, so, what I'm going to double.
Okay. And, and second, and that's it, what weapon definition does City Rockaway need to use?
That's a, that's a good one. There is three weapons delineations that we use. One is a local weapon. Then the state has a weapons delineation layer, and then the defense also. So we have three layers of weapon delineations that we use. Typically, what I do is if we get permits in that, where the property touches any of those three data sets, we do, we require what's called a weapon delineation. And they have to have, bring someone out onsite and actually identify, some professional out onsite and identify where those weapons are. So I don't rely on an assessment comes down to steel parcel development. But when we're doing work like this, we will probably use the local one for this. Because the local data set is actually the most detailed of all.
Anything to check for?
No. Close, it's close.
Cosmo, did you have a?
Yeah, I was curious if the program took into account any of the properties that would just be considered.
Oh, you mean like?
There's plenty of places.
That are not, that are just not habitable, and they can't live yet.
Right, but if they already have services going, so that's where I would place.
Yeah. And that, I think that would be, remember I showed them those purple ones, redevelopment potential? I think those would fall on that category. The way that we typically do a simple redevelopment assumption is if the land is worth more than the structure, then it's likely to be redeveloped.
Great. The, the quick add-on for that is, when, you know, when I look at lots to buy here, one of the hardest things to know is, is it buildable or not? Will this program, will that information inform the MLS? So we might have better data to understand it for them?
It won't inform the MLS, but I think you could put the data layer on our city's GIS and just like, I don't know if anyone uses that. It's a great, it's a great resource. If you don't use it, we have an online GIS mapping on the city's website. I would encourage you all to check it out. There'd be, learn a lot about all sorts of properties, even links to the city's office and accountants, so you can get kind of information on that site. But that would be, that's, that'd be something that we could put on that site that's available. Again, it's, it's just, it's good information to have.
I have a question about the wetlands topic. Is there anything that we can do to encourage the elimination done here?
Well, what we do, so if we do require a delineation, we actually give it to the state, okay? The state gets all, all the seed parcels. So they're, they're, they're updating their data layer based on our local.
Right. So my question is, when we, when we did, when we did it in White Dock.
Yeah.
We created wetlands in Madonna. There's, the pond in the back of Madonna is man-made. And most people don't know that, but it's man-made. So we made that pond. And so we made, we took away ground, but we made wetlands here in Rockaway. And now you can make it in other parts of the state if you're doing that.
So what you did was you did, you did an onsite mitigation, which means, and that's, because a lot of that was considered, a lot of those parcels were wetlands. So that's a, that's a different type of mitigation. There's also, and I don't, I don't know the exact language, but it's basically like a credit program where you're buying wetland credits or mitigation that then are used to restore wetlands in other areas.
So I want to encourage creating wetlands here for, for folks to make houses.
Sure. So that would be, you'd want to encourage, it's just, if the developer typically chooses they're doing mitigation, what kind of mitigation they would want to be. And it's either onsite or usually.
So is that something that we can encourage folks when they're doing that work to do, to create wetlands here? Is that something?
I guess it would probably be, if an applicant came in to do a subdivision like that, I mean, that would be a discussion that I would have with them at, you know, pre-application meetings. You know, we have a lot of wetlands here. What's your plan for mitigation? Are you going to employ the wetlands? If you're doing mitigation, what type of mitigation? So it's really a staff-level conversation when you have a tenant. If you're doing a subdivision, though, that's also going to go to planning commission or you have discussion there. And, and planning commission can make recommendations like, hey, can you please do some onsite instead of, you know, credits? Because we would really like to have someone. So that's kind of the level where.
We, we like more.
So at, at the end of this, we'll have recommendations for housing to meet our needs and a set of recommendations for changes to fees or ordinances or zoning that would help incent the housing that we have, we recommend that we build in our community. Is that?
Yeah, so yeah, basically you'll have, you'll know your, your billable land inventory. You'll know what your projected housing needed is by type.
Yeah.
And then, and whether we have a plan or not to do that. And we'll, and then we'll have some recommendations on policies.
I'd have incent that to happen. Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Martine, Counselor Cheek, yeah?
No, I'm.
Any other questions from the audience? Oh, yeah, the, the one that's closest to me. And then we'll get you in the, in the back row.
If we have recommendations, how do we get those to the committee? I mean, if we think of stuff as a warrant alone?
I would encourage you to come to those planning commission meetings, and then we'll have a public commentary and discussion with the public. I think, you know, there's probably also a way to send emails to the, well, ideas and whatnot.
And in the back row?
In general, can you talk about some of the consequences of failing to meet the housing needs?
Uh, that's a tough one. I think, you know, most of these that I've worked on, everyone has been able to, cities I've worked at have been able to at least show that they've had enough land to do that. If not, then you're going to have to do some more drastic measures. So much in use, you know, expansions and whatnot. But I think my, my feeling going into this experience here in Rockaway is that I think we're going to be able to meet it only because our forecast is not. We don't, it's not, we aren't growing very fast. Rockaway is not a fast place. So it's not going to show a huge need. Now, the interesting thing, I say that, and we go back to the second home and short-term rental home, a lot of the buildings of the homes that are, that are being done are for second home and vacation homes. So it's a unique situation in that regard. So it's a unique situation in that regard. And I think that's, that's going to be the challenge with this, parsing that out. As we've already discussed. So hopefully it helps a little bit. I'm not sure.
Uh, Scott McGinnis?
Thank you. Tagging on to that and, and the previous question. Is our pop, you haven't done the analysis yet, I realize this, but is there a possibility that our population's not growing because there's not homes for people to move here because they're in short-term rentals or, or second homes?
I mean.
And, and did this study even look at that?
Um, no, it won't tell. It won't give you that answer. There's a lot of factors to the problem. There's, we think about it, it's available jobs, it's, it is available housing, it's schools, you know, all slew of things that come into the background of your population forecast. Portland State is where it's, where typically they come out with the population forecast for all the jurisdictions in, in Oregon. But a lot of cities push back and say, hey, we're actually growing a lot faster than that forecast. And because the city's funding this and it's not something the state is doing, we, we really want to, when we get into this, we can say, I think we're going to grow a little bit faster than that. And that would then show you need more housing. Or you could say that because we have this phenomenon of second homes and not short-term rentals, that we actually have a lot higher need than, because it's not, our, our housing development is not solely based on our population.
That's enough. Thank you.
I believe we have somebody who's online that would like to comment. I think if we unmute Daniel Owlet, he has, would like to speak.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now, Daniel.
Thank you very much for unmuting me. And Scott, I wanted to say thank you for your presentation. Um, the one thing I'm not hearing in the conversation is the current ordinance and the current policy. What I'm referring to is ordinance 53.05, which requires one dwelling, one water meter. So anyone who wants to add an ADU or add an extra unit has to pay another SDC charge and additional connection fees and an additional $1,200 per dwelling in water and sewer fees. These fees are exorbitant. If someone wants to add a duplex right now in Rockaway Beach, it's $15,000 and $2,400 a year. If anyone wants to add a fourplex, it's $41,000 in fees and $4,800 a month, I'm sorry, a year in water sewer fees. So if we're going to incentivize the construction of more housing, it seems to me that we need to talk about the fee structure and how it relates to encouraging more construction. Um, I appreciate everything you're saying about zoning and, you know, wetlands and whatnot, but we're not talking about the fee structure. To me, that's the quickest, easiest way to get something built.
Right. There, this analysis does not, we're not looking at fee structure for STCs or water bills as part of this. I don't know. I mean, there's an argument to be made for both sides. You know, to play devil's advocate, I might say that, you know, if you're building a fourplex that's, you know, worth a million dollars and you're spending $250,000 on per unit, that $15,000 is not that much money for you. But someone might say it isn't, you know? I mean, I work in a lot of different cities. STCs vary widely, depending on which community you're in. I've not done the analysis on the water bills or whether how, how STCs affect multifamily dwellings. Um, I think, you know, doing, that's another study that you, you want to do is looking at how rate fees affect development. And that's very specific and that's probably something economists would do, not something that I would typically even know how to do.
Well, I think, sorry, I was just going to say, I think we need to act like developers and think like developers. And what are their challenges? You know, what are the fee structures that they have to face? If we want to incentivize the construction of housing, we have to think about the fees and maybe try to incentivize by lowering those fees.
I wouldn't argue with that. And I, maybe I mentioned, you know, the whole idea of there, there are, and we can actually, and I think our ordinance allows us to weigh SDCs on specific projects. If, so if a developer were to come to council, they could ask, council say, hey, I got this project. I can't get this thing to turn, return, I need return on investment. If I could just get a little break on my SDCs, I could do this project. You know, I've seen that happen in lots of cities. I think, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure that our city ordinance allows someone to come and ask for that specifically.
But Scott, that, that probably wouldn't be part of the scope of this study. That's something that will happen later with planning commission and city council and staff. Yeah. So it's outside the scope of what we're talking about.
It is outside the scope of what we're talking about. I'm just saying there is potential that someone could come through that.
Uh, I'm really, ordinance 53003 is the one water meter, one dwelling policy. I think if we did two dwellings per water meter, that would allow ADUs to connect for free.
But also, you could also change the ordinance for ADUs specifically not, not required. And there's, that's another option.
And we could be the leader in the county of doing it. We could be the first ones to do it. We were either the first or the second to pass ADUs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'd get us something to work with.
Right, yeah.
Is there anybody else online that has indicated an interest in speaking? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Fruganisi. I think I'm going to have to take Italian as right. All right. Well, let's move on to our staff reports and the chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse to report on the fire department.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, yeah, for you, the Fire Department Council Report for December of 2022. We'll start with some of the rundown that we had in December. You'll notice we had a very busy December. Actually had 61 different events from, 37 of them were 911 calls. We had a lot of medical calls of 29, a couple of structured fires, and then a couple of NVA's. Trainings we held for, we'll talk about that in a minute. And then the non-emergent calls were very interesting that you'll see beach safety come up with the king tide to the influx of tourists to come view them. We spent a lot of extra time on the beach, talking to people, educating them about the beach safety and please stay out of the water. Um, years to date, there's a more comprehensive report we'll cover in a minute, but you'll notice that very similar rundown at 21 and 22. There were 755 total events in 21 and 781 in 2022. So a slight increase overall. And when we analyze it in a minute here, we see that there was less 911 calls, more non-emergent. Uh, training, we kept pretty busy last month. A couple of the highlights, the vehicle, the community CPR class last month. Uh, that we had 15 members in the community attend. We will be hosting more of those. And if you need a CPR class or a training, they will be available. We'll keep you posted on when the next ones are. Ultimately, we'd like to see everybody trained. It really helped us out and, and the families in the news. Um, we also held some trainings on SCBA use and air management, all successful. January, we were holding communications, a multi-company drill with, we actually held that this first Tuesday of the month. I don't know what date that was. All seven fire departments in Somerton County participated in the live exercise. Uh, and it went extremely well. We simulated a commercial fire in Garibaldi to practice some communications. Worked extremely well. Uh, tonight is actually the first night of our EMT class that we are in cooperation with Toma Bay Community College. Uh, please announce it's 23 students in that class. We'll be hosting here in Rockaway every Wednesday and Saturday. Uh, 19 of those members are volunteer firefighters throughout the county. So seeing a huge influx of more trained EMTs in the county, which should make us all sleep better at night. Uh, three of the members are from Rockaway. Busy training schedule for the year. We'll cover that a little bit at the end of this, but it's a, we've, we've got an aggressive training schedule. Uh, and Councilor McGinnis, I forgot, we are going to host a full Saturday in the burn trailer and then we will get that out there. Uh, it's coming up, waiting for, actually kind of waiting on some of our new SCBAs, which I'm going to jump ahead, but we did accept a bid on the AFG grant and the air packs were ordered yesterday. So I haven't got a delivery date, but they are ordered. So big thing off our plate. Uh, on the second page here, real quick on the beach safety, I think I already covered it, but you'll see, we actually even made contact with a, a family that was out, had young children, four children and two adults that were playing in the king tide today. With the, so we were educational and were able to get them out of harm's way. But I did spend a lot of time up there trying to make people safe. Um, let's see what else. Oh, and we're going to be working tomorrow with the Pioneer. We're going to do a PSA uh, with the Coast Guard and Garibaldi Fire. We're going to do some time on the jetty and on the beach here in Rockaway to make a little PSA to educate folks on the dangers of that big blue thing we had out that way. It can be dangerous. I, I know that's a news flash to everybody. We want to educate our folks, our visitors, our citizens. Talking real quick about emergency preparedness. That group is starting to gel each month. Uh, we have taken a lot of input from folks of what direction 2023 is going to take that preparedness. And I will tell you, we got a exercise with power outage recently. And it, I'll be honest, if I, I'll say it for everybody, it opened my eyes to some of the, the challenges and procedures we need to have in place. So we are prioritizing right now our radio network, getting it fully operational and some of our just immediate short-term plans and how we're going to get that information out to the public. So if that event were to happen again, which I'm thinking we might lose power again sometime for an extended period, just saying. That we're prepared for that better next time. And that's our goal. So we're going to spend some time and effort on that. More volunteers are needed. If you're looking for something to do on the first Wednesday of the month, uh, six o'clock here, we have a meeting and that group is really starting to come together. Preparedness Fair is in March. Can I, is it going to be right?
April.
April, I meant. See, we got a lot of.
You were testing us, right?
Yeah, yeah, just seeing. Sorry, I thought it was March, April. And it is, has a lot of work behind the scenes going on right now. We helped with the high school. Pretty excited to see that come off. And then hopefully we check a lot of boxes on where we're at. Look forward to 2023 being a building year, again, increase our skills and abilities and overall safety and service we provide in the community. I also, I, I, I'm very mad at introductions. And back in August, we actually hired a firefighter. And I was reminded by the council last month that I hadn't brought that person here to introduce him to the council. So, uh, Ryan, I, I'm going to introduce him properly now. Um, I can't, anyway. Uh, but in August, we were able to hire our first full-time firefighter. And I'd like to introduce the community council firefighter, Ryan Booth. Work off my plate in the daytime of responses. He's a firefighter and EMT. And each day improves his skill set and I look forward to a long work relationship with. Thank you, Ryan. This is the council and the talk.
There'll be a test later on this.
I'm glad we can be lighthearted. And sometimes our job gets kind of stressful. So appreciate the levity. But in all seriousness, I did hand, hand to the council a five-year, last five-year data plan. Uh, find some interesting takes in this. If you can see from 2018 to 2022, how our calls and drills and everything we do, I consider part of our total events. And we went from 320 to 781 in five-year events. We've more than doubled what we do. Uh, some of it is, like I say, training. If you looked at trainings, for example, we went from 50 trainings in 2018 to 107 lots of them. I believe in training, keeping our people prepared and, and ready for any challenge. Uh, the other catch that I thought was interesting with the number of 911 calls went from 209 to 400 in five years. So about doubled. I can't really tell you why. Uh, there's a lot of factors, I think. Uh, I think we're getting older as part of it. Um, and you'll notice the medicals went from 194 to 308. So definitely an increase. And that's really where our focus is right now, is making sure we, we have you prepared for that. Um, other than that, I would answer any questions the council might have. And directions they'd like to give.
Councilor McGinnis?
First of all, Ryan, I want to say welcome to Rockaway. We're, we're glad to have you employed here. And, uh, and also I want to thank you, Chief Hesse, for your continued community involvement of, of the community. Just everything from guests to burn, which I even want to see. But, but other things too, like emergency preparedness, 15 people at the EMT training, just reaching out and involving the community and now a story that you're going to do with the Pioneer News. So thank you for, for reaching out to our community. I appreciate that.
So on the medical line there, it talks about 93% in 2018 and 77%. What is that a percent of?
A percent of the total 911 calls.
Okay.
Um, we've expanded some of the services we have. That's, that's part of our increase in numbers. We take a lot more burn complaints, for example.
Okay.
Um, bought more non-emergent stuff that we didn't have the staff to handle before that we now do. So that, that's part of the increase, but yeah, that's actual percent.
The medical calls are going up, but other things are going up faster. So you're really only addressing medical.
Numbers a little bit. I think really for us, it looks like high 70%, which is actually low on the national average of medical. Most departments are 85 plus.
Uh, any questions from the audience? Mr. Weissenflue?
I don't know if this is, I don't think this is your issue, chief, or, or the council. I'm not sure whose issue, that it is an issue. Okay. Is, we found that the power outage, we also lose cell service after three hours.
Yes.
And what can we do about, get something to know about that? Because that seems to be sort of.
I think that's a very fair question. I just sat through an AAR with OBM. And that was one of the things that did come up. I don't know if we have a very viable solution at that this time, but it's being addressed as far as backup power, um, an alternate way to, to get information out to folks. There's a few things in the works that are hope close to the best at the moment, but at least I know it's being addressed. It was definitely brought up at the last meeting. Good question. Yeah, because we, we don't have landlines anymore. It used to be power up and that, that has become a challenge.
I mean, you know, how do you know good information?
Right. Well, well, during that power outage, that reverse NEXL where they sent out the information, we sent to 26,000 people. I, I'm guessing by short hands, I may people received that because we didn't have cell service.
Yeah.
So 6,000 was all that was actually notified. So that makes it very interesting. So that was what brought up, well, how do we get the information out to the folks? So, um, being addressed, even locally, we're addressing some of our options and we will do our best.
So, so I have an idea about that. Um, I actually think it's because the generator that used to be up at the tower is dead and hasn't been up kept by the installer.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It used to work fabulous when we had no power. The time we lost power for six days, we had perfect, and we took care of each other that way. And so, um, I know somebody who helped put that tower up and they said there was a beautiful, brand new generator put in there when they did it.
And that may be.
And it hasn't been kept.
Maybe.
We're taking care of, so maybe, I don't know. How we look into that, but.
I don't either, but that's a good.
Do we have anybody online that's indicated an interest in asking questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fire Chief Hesse. All right. The chair recognizes under. All right, the chair recognizes uh Under Sheriff Matt Kelly and Deputy Kevin Grogan to speak to us about the Tillman County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, councilman, mayor. Uh, first things first, Happy New Year. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about the end of 2022. Um, just to touch on it a little bit, as Chief Hesse said, uh, power outages, flooding, uh, make sure we're prepared for that one. Backup power generators, flashlight, candles, shell-stable food, water, always be prepared wherever it is. Not many power outage will be ready to go for that and use touch on it could help our neighbors because they might not have the money or the wills or means to have, that's up to them. Um, so I'm just here to discuss a couple of calls that happened in the beginning of December in Rockaway. And it was an interesting end of the year. So uh, first things first, we have a notable call of theft of power tools in the community center. Um, unfortunately, the tools have not been recovered yet and the contractors are not able to provide the identification numbers on the tools. Uh, so the sheriff just wanted to make sure that people are taking inventory of their items, any work of electronics, bicycles, all that stuff, hammering down mistake spot. Because essentially we get those numbers, we enter them into the system, and if they pop up at a pawn shop or something like that, it's marked as stolen and it helps us apprehend the individuals that committed the crime. Uh, another big one was the report of a motor vehicle accident located on North Third and Marie. Uh, driver left the road and went to the vacant close by. Uh, after being uh examined and investigated, the vehicle was wanted in a hit run with property damage by Oregon State Police. We were able to detain the subject until Oregon State Police arrived and the subject was arrested and there's a waiting chart as soon as returning. Um, with the following months and the holidays that have passed, um, it can be especially rough for some people in area not having family around or any way to celebrate the holiday. So we had quite a few calls of people being lonely and with suicide attempts. Um, responding to all these calls and suspects, the individuals were transported for medical and mental health. With that being said, there is plenty of offerings at us as we provide to these individuals with the seaside. Uh, 988 is a great reference number for people who might be thinking about harming themselves or others. It gives you the outlet for them to talk. Um, also there's a PPR training, which is question, persuade and refer. So that gives them uh insight into, you know, maybe making a phone call to the sheriff's office, having us come out, talk to them and establish your board, maybe giving them the help. Other than that, that's all I got to come up with. Any questions?
Questions for uh Deputy Grogan.
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, the chair recognizes Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson to report on Public Works.
To the council, mayor, the manager. March and December continue to challenge the public works department. Our keeping storm drains open throughout town and preventing hazardous trees is a major, is a major concern during storm events. And with that said, the public works department operates water treatment plant, three wells, three reservoirs, three booster stations, the waste, wastewater treatment plant and uh seven lift stations, all of which must work when we need power. Um, I am happy to say that with the last power outage, 27, public works was able to set up our merchant generator with no major issues. Uh, the old girl senior boardwalk was damaged in the last storm. Three big trees fell on the boardwalk. Uh, public works has contacted contractors, quotes, repair the damaged area. Uh, public works also applied for a small city law grant for the year 2023. I'm sorry to inform you that we did not, sorry to inform you that we did not uh, we did not get the project award. Uh, this was a very competitive grant with 84 applicants requesting a total of 19 million with just uh 6.3 to distribute. Very competitive. Uh, work at Third Street Reservoir is almost complete, but we've already done. Uh, just some minor details. Um, we need, we need good weather to finish the light painting and groundwork. Other projects continue moving forward. Public Works has two water projects that should be coming together in the beginning of this year. Uh, there will be a new pressure-reducing valve on South Second Street that will allow for more water and added residence to our distribution system that runs south from South Second Street. The second project is a water booster station on C and Q Drive. This project has been a little harder to achieve than I was hoping for. Um, but with the help of Tillman County local contractors and city engineers, it looks like we have a plan to move forward on. Uh, this project will disconnect the abandoned reservoir from the distribution system identified in the water master plant while increasing water pressure on C and Q Drive. This is something that homeowners in the hill have been asking for for years. Uh, this added pressure could allow for more houses to be added to the distribution system on C and Q Drive. Uh, sewer systems are working nice with year, with year cleaning wrapped up. Public Works will finish year-end reports and start planning for the new year. Community center siding looks fantastic. One issue, contractor files of a building was not level. Not surprising, being over 100 years old and having no concrete foundation. I think it was, they did a great job with that. Public Works was able to fill an open position, a utility worker one. Um, we hired Jared Abbott. He's a local guy with some working experience. Um, Public Works, we do not take a day off, so someone works, someone will be here every day of the year, will always be available. Um, with that said, we've been down one guy for 13 months, so we are excited to train him, get him, put him next. Are there any questions?
Anybody online indicate questions? Thank you very much, Superintendent Emerson. I appreciate it. Uh, well, last but not least, the chair recognizes City Manager Shepherd.
Hey, thank you, mayor. Um, welcome everybody to the first regular council meeting in 2023. Uh, welcome back all the current council members and, and uh welcome our new mayor. Hope your first council meeting is treating you well.
So far, so good.
Um, I've, I've got a feeling 2023 is gonna be a very productive year for us. Um, addition to everything you've heard about, our, our department has worked on. Um, and everything we talked about in December at our workshop and our uh regular council meeting, we're coming in 2023 with a lot of momentum. Uh, we've got Lake Lidle project, the Anchor Street apartment project, uh, we're looking at accessibility and upgrades at the wayside. Uh, 3G may work on our housing maintenance analysis here, uh, begin that real soon. Uh, we're gonna look at uh conducting an organizational assessment. Uh, we'll look at the service levels the city can provide our citizens now. And we'll try to find out what level of service they'd like to see in the future. And the organizational assessment will give us a path to, to get there. Uh, so that's something I will uh begin working on soon and uh council have a proposal at some point. But anyway, a lot gone on. And like I said, you've heard everything the department heads are working on, fire, public works, sheriff's office. So it's gonna be a busy year. And then we've got a brand new governing body. Um, some of you are returning, some of you are new. But overall, it's a new body. You all will have a, a new set of goals, new set of priorities. And over the next few months, I will try to determine what those are and uh we'll roll that, roll that into the budget, roll it into our priorities for uh the next fiscal year and then the remainder of 2023. So I'm excited. I think it's gonna be great and uh we're looking forward to it. All the staff is, uh, we're ready to, ready to get some things done. I have a few uh housekeeping items. Uh, number one, on January 25th, the Oregon Ethics Commission will be here uh from 10 to noon. Uh, uh, council, uh, city council and the planning commission are, are invited. Um, and basically gonna go give us all the pressure on uh public officials and, and ethics laws here in Oregon. We will have an open house on February 22nd here at 6:00 PM. Uh, and uh Scott will facilitate that meeting as well. That'll be about the Lake Lidle park project. Uh, we have on our homepage, uh, there's a survey you can take for that project. Um, and the more, the more responses we get, um, as part of that survey, the better, uh, the better that meeting will be. Um, as far as what everybody wants to see as far as improvements goes at Lake Lidle. And then I don't want to make any promises. I'm trying to be optimistic, but the, the new date for the wayfinding signs and the gateway signs, uh, construction might, might begin uh Monday, the 16th. So we will, we will see. And I just want to give kudos to our, our public works department for everything they did during the power outage, the emergency prep group, uh, for running the warming, warming center here at City Hall. Um, and everything our fire department does. Um, they are incredibly busy, uh, incredibly understaffed. Um, but they always show up, they always get a job done, never complain. Just a, just a great department and, and overall, we have a great city staff and I'm, I'm happy for every single one of them. I really am, so. Anyway, that's, that's what I have to do all tonight.
Questions, comments? Any questions from the audience? Is there anybody online that's raised their hand? Thank you very much, uh, City Manager Shepherd. All right, we're gonna move on to our public comment section. And in advance, I just want to thank those who participate for participating in this public comment this evening. Um, I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have any folks uh remotely that uh have indicated?
I'm not right now.
Okay, we'll check back. All right, thank you. All right, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has five minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen, listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed and the appropriate staff member will contact anyone um who requires follow-up within three uh business days. Uh, after I call your name, please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. As I mentioned, you'll have five minutes. Do we have a timer that we're gonna throw up? All right, did we get somebody indicating uh Daniel, did Daniel Howlett, Howlett raise his hand?
Well, he texted me. Should we not have texts of him? But I do.
I will, I will add him to the list.
His hand icon isn't working, he said.
Okay, thank you. I will add him to the list. Thank you, Daniel. All right, um, I, um, the chair recognizes Scott Fisher. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record. Oh, it has been. All right, that was, that was easy. All right. The chair uh recognizes Cosmo Jones. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record.
I'm Cosmo Jones, 110 North West 18, here in Rockaway Beach. Um, I just wanted to ask the council and then our, our citizens, help for a project that uh we're working on. Um, we're trying to create a uh after-school extended music program that will provide dual credit for students of the high school and um to teach some music technology, music business and some other things that'll actually help them have a career in that, in that industry. And we've managed to get a lot of things done. One little speed bump that we have is that in order to pull this off, they will need to add a music teacher because um Michael Simpson, who's the director, is spread too thin. He's the only one who has the credentials to run this class. So we need to be able to hire um a music teacher. I don't know if it's part-time or full-time um to take so that the rest of the kids don't lose, you know, their, their music support. My understanding is that comes from property taxes and, and some from the lumber companies. And then um lately, there hasn't been a lot of money uh coming from the lumber company. But I understand there is some type of grant that's coming through that might help pay for this. And since it's up to the citizens, whether or not we can add a, another music teacher, I guess, by, you know, their vote and their property taxes, I'm hoping that everybody will support that. And um the high school students have taken an active interest in this and they are gonna be going door-to-door to registered voters. So if you're a registered voter, expect a knock from a high school student. They're very excited about this program and they would love the opportunity to, to do something like this. And I'm doing everything I can to help and I need a little help from everybody else to get over with. That's all.
Not, not having dialogue now, but as someone who's taught dual credit, like you're talking about, would you, could we talk later? Not, not now, but could, I'll, I'll have a hot chocolate, I'll have a hot chocolate at the roaster in a little time.
Anytime and anybody needs a cookie or a glass of wine or a hug after those are saying.
Thank you, President. All right, the chair recognizes Nancy, is it Lanyon?
Nancy.
All right, thank you, Nancy. Please approach the podium and state your full name and address for the record.
Nancy Lava Lanyon, 627 Anthony Street. And this is just really quick. Um, I moved here uh the fall of 2019 and love the fact that we have the Rockaway Beach Tide Tails. And each year since, they've been late and I went in again, like I always do in December and then in January. My publishing handle, we don't know. And so I just, it couldn't be better. We, this is our beach and uh, we are tourism, we are doing safety, right? For beach safety. So Tide Tails, I just wish that City of Rockaway had those printed every year, fine time. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but um I live here, I'm around it all the time. I'm sure that one.
Thank you, Nancy.
I actually have some of those. They were dropped off at the roaster. If anybody wants the 2023 Tide Charts.
From the city of Rockaway Beach.
I don't know where they came from. Tide Charts at the.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you, Nancy. Um, uh, the chair recognizes Dan Howlett. I'm not gonna ask him to approach the podium, but just come online for us, please, Dan.
All righty, are you there?
Yeah, we're here. Are you there?
Okay, thank you. I was having an, an issue with the muting. Um, okay, Happy New Year, everyone. I wanted to officially welcome our new mayor, Charles McBealie. And I was planning on welcoming new council, councillor Cindy K. Gregory, but sadly, she won't be able to serve for health reasons. This is a big loss for our town. Her sweet spirit and positivity will be missed. We have a lot to be excited about this year. The Sandy Berry Trail Project is moving forward. Rockaway Beach was awarded 1.7 million in grant funding, which will result in a creation of a 10 to 12-foot paving trail through town. This biking and walking path will be, will have a huge impact for generations to come. I'd like to see some community outreach for this important project. Another cool project is the Lake, like, uh, Lake Lidle Boat Ramp. The city is actively working on community outreach to plan the future of this space. The citizens have a chance to fill out a questionnaire and share their thoughts and ideas so that everyone has a fair say in what it ultimately looks like. There's a community workshop planned for February 22nd. Another project coming up is the Anchor Street Parking Lot. For those of you who don't know, this is the city-owned empty gravel lot located between the grocery store and the fire station. The current plan calls for paving it, adding public bathrooms, EV charging stations and some other amenities. Come on now, we can do better. It's already a parking lot and it sits empty most of the time unless it's Fourth of July weekend. There's already a public bathroom and parking at the wayside close by and it's about to get remodeled. So do taxpayers really have to pay for two brand-new public bathrooms downtown? The Anchor Street Lot is a prime walkable downtown location with tons of possibilities. The city comprehensive plan calls for more construction of commercial and multifamily buildings. Imagine a cool food cart space, a commercial building, or some much-needed affordable housing, or countless other possibilities. Last year, Rockaway leaders failed to consult the community about this project. Please push pause and give us the same outreach, workshop and questionnaire as the Lake Lidle project. We deserve the opportunity to weigh in and share our ideas. We want community outreach on all city projects. If the city is dead-set on building parking lots, a much better use of taxpayer money would be expanding the parking lot at the Big Tree Boardwalk. The city seriously underestimated its popularity and didn't plan appropriately for parking. Don't get me wrong, the Big Tree Project is a huge win for our town. Thank you to the citizens who had the foresight to preserve this natural wonder for future generations. We need to build on this legacy of conservation and expand our protection to other natural spaces as recommended by the city comprehensive plan. For example, the Jetty Creek Watershed. For example, the Jetty Creek Watershed, where we get our drinking water, is now over ninety percent clear-cut and sprayed with pesticides. This is unacceptable. We need to buy it and let it regenerate. Let's be honest, the city should have bought it years ago. Luckily, the passage of the federal infrastructure bill last year, there is grant funding available to start the process. A healthy forest ensures and enhances the local natural beauty and provides cleaner, safer drinking water for generations to come. Instead of clear cuts.
One minute, Daniel.
Imagine a diverse coastal forest above town, bird watching, bike paths, other recreational opportunities. The thing is, Rockaway forests are worth more for tourism dollars than two-by-fours. Regarding the ten-acre high-ground parcel, yes, let's buy it and then let's consult the community first for its highest and best use. There's so much to do. To develop the next generation of leaders, we need to restart our local citizen committees and engage and inspire young people who have more energy and vision. All of us, but especially young people, have huge potential to impact the future of Rockaway Beach. As our new leaders, I respectfully ask that you engage more with the community, get local opinions, and make it transparent. Please, we want town hall-style meetings, follow-up and access to more meetings via Zoom, digitize all city records and post everything online. Build community trust by encouraging public oversight, transparency, and accountability. So much to do.
Thank you, Daniel.
And getting to know more people in town. We're so lucky to live at the coast. Let's work together to chart the future of the next generation. I'm excited for two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
All right, is anybody else virtually interested in speaking? All right, thank you. Well, I just want to thank all of you for being engaged in city government and sharing your thoughts. We do genuinely appreciate it. All right, we have no old business before us, but we do have some new business. Election of a new city council president. As the first meeting of each year, at the first meeting of each year, the city council must elect a president from its membership. The council president presides in absence of the mayor and acts as mayor when the mayor is unable to perform their duties. Let me begin by nominating Councilor McGinnis for council president. Councilor McGinnis has demonstrated over and over her commitment to enabling Rockaway Beach to be a place where merchants, tourists, and residents, all people thrive. She believes, as I do, the decisions the council and other elements of our city government are best made with community collaboration, thoughtfulness, and accountability. Anyone who has observed Councilor McGinnis in city council and planning meetings knows that she is someone we can trust in the role as council president. I open the floor for comments from councillors on my nomination.
I move that the Rockaway Beach City Council elect Penny Cheek to serve as the city council's president.
I would second that motion. Sorry, Daniel. I mean, Daniel, I called you Daniel. Sorry, Charles. I think Penny's been here a long time. I think she would be a good fit.
It's been moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council elect Penny Cheek to serve as city council president. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, a name? Ah, in the ears of the Chair, the ayes have it, and Penny Cheek is city council president. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, next new business, add and remove check signers. The city of Rockaway Beach maintains a list of authorized check signers. Council may remove check signer's authority by motion. It is recommended by our city manager that former city officials Terry Walhood and Susan J. Wilson be removed as check signers on the Columbia Bank checking account. The city manager further recommends that Fire Chief Todd Hesse and Mayor Charles McNeely be granted check signing authority for the Columbia Bank checking account. I open the floor for comments from councillors on City Manager Shepherd's recommendations. Yeah.
There's no limit to the number of check signers.
I make a motion that we add Chief, Fire Chief Todd Hesse and Mayor Charles McNeely as check signers and remove former city councillor Terry Walhood and former mayor Susan Wilson from the check account, checking account.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council grant check signing authority to Fire Chief Todd Hesse and Mayor Charles McNeely and remove Terry Walhood and Susan J. Wilson as check signers on the Columbia Bank checking account. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, a name? In the ears of the Chair, the ayes have it. All right, next new business, request for approval of resolution number twenty-three-nine-seven-eight. A resolution making a contingency transfer of appropriation authority for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. The city of Rockaway Beach has reached a complete settlement with Griffin Oak Property Investment LLC, Tai and Deng, Hugh P. Lee, and Tui Nguyen. This resolution transfers appropriations from general fund contingency to general fund administration category. A contingency transfer of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is necessary due to expenditures related to this negotiated settlement of litigation and associated legal fees. I open the floor for comments from councillors on the resolution at hand. Well, any comments from the, any comments from the audience? Any raised hands virtually? Okay.
I move the Rockaway Beach Council to approve the resolution two-three-nine-seven-eight.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve resolution number twenty-three-nine-seven-eight. And because this is a resolution, we will take a vote by vote councillor by councillor vote. So councillor Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Hayes. Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The resolution passes, four votes in favor. Next new business. Oh, excuse me, I gotta take a little drink of water before we move on to the next new business. All right, request for approval of resolution number twenty-three-nine-seven-nine. A resolution approving the appointment of Three J Consulting as consultant for the housing needs analysis. The Rockaway Beach Planning Commission recommends approval of the scope of work for the housing needs analysis proposed by Three J Consulting. This resolution will authorize Three J Consulting to begin work on the housing needs analysis with the planning commission acting as the project's advisory committee. I open the floor for comments from councillors on the resolution at hand.
I move that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve resolution number twenty-three-nine-seven-eight.
I second it.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approve resolution number twenty-three-nine-seven-nine. How do you vote councillor Cheek?
Yes.
Councillor Hayes. Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
And the resolution passes. We've now reached the point in the meeting for council comments. The Chair recognizes councillor Cheek.
Me, all right, in the middle.
Alphabetical.
He kind of tipped me by surprise. I usually don't get to be first. I just want to welcome you and whoever our next councillor will be to our group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I want to thank everyone in the audience for being here tonight. It's nice to see a nice, calm audience.
Councillor Hayes.
I want to thank Terry and Sue for the time that they spent with us. Maybe we didn't always agree, but we actually did some good stuff together while we were sitting together. Welcome Charles and Mary back and I love Cindy K. and so it was really wonderful that we could acknowledge her today too. That's important for me. I'm really looking forward to the coming year and that's it. Thank you for the paperwork that you've gotten to us today too. I'm really glad to be done with the lawsuit. Really, really glad. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I noticed Scott's price was a lot less than we talked about and when he first gave us the proposal for the housing study too, and so I'm glad to see that and I forgot to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martine.
I noticed driving south into town that seems like we're missing a lot of our speed signs. The last speed sign that says forty-five heading south from the north is just shy of Northwest Ninth Street. They're all on the west side of the street and there's no thirty mile an hour speed on the sign, so we get to City Hall. So strangers coming into town, they just come whipping through town and I don't know where all the signs went. They're all gone.
Wow.
And they're always on the same side of the street, the west side of the street. I don't know what to do about that. Is that O-D?
I was gonna ask her, are you talking about the signs along?
Yeah, the speed signs.
Yeah, that's O-D. We can inquire.
Somebody has a question, then what?
That's all. Thank you, thank you. Councillor McGinnis.
Well, I want to thank the Fire Department, Emergency Prep, and City Hall staff for the warming center that we had when electricity was out. And I also want to thank councillor Cheek because I didn't have internet, cell service, or electricity, but she somehow got a hold of me and asked me if I would come down with her and volunteer and work in the warming center. And I think Penny said there were, she counted around fifty people who came. And so it was very much needed in the community. So hopefully this is something we can continue to build on. I want to welcome Charles McNeely as mayor and sad to see that Cindy isn't able to fulfill it and her position, but look forward to a wonderful two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. All right, first, I just want to thank the voters of Rockaway Beach for putting their confidence in me to work with them to come together and collaboratively move our awesome city forward to even greater glory days. Second, I want to thank Dan Emerson for taking six hours out of his busy day to educate me on public works. As Dan mentioned in his staff report, the Public Works Department operates a water treatment plant, three wells, three reservoirs, three booster stations, and a sewer treatment plant with seven lift stations. Before my day with him, I had no idea what he was talking about, but now I know because Dan patiently took me through the operation of the waste treatment plant and then drove me to booster stations, lift stations, reservoirs, and the water treatment plant. Wow. If any of you remember the A Tickets, B Tickets, C Tickets, D Tickets, and E Tickets at Disneyland, this was truly an E-ticket ride. Yeah, I know, I understand. It's okay. I learned that the Oregon Health Department Drinking Water Service has certified that the Rockaway Beach Water District successfully met the criteria for outstanding performance. This is particularly impressive as Rockaway Beach is served by surface water. I enjoyed getting to know Dan on a personal level, learned of his love of dogs, his upcoming jujitsu competition, and how proud, how proud he is of his team in Public Works. At the end of the day, I got to meet the team. We are fortunate to have these guys taking care of us. They do a lot to make our quality of life better. Now, they set a high bar, Fire Chief Hesse, but I am, I am meeting with Fire Chief Hesse tomorrow and his team, so I'm looking forward to a deep dive into our fire department on Thursday. Last but not least, I suspect many of you know of the feud between the Hatfields and the McCoys. For those that don't, the rivalry between the Hatfields and the McCoys is one of the oldest and best-known family feuds in American history. The feud started over a dispute of ownership. Rockaway Beach has its own version of the Hatfields and the McCoys. We have organizations that are feuding with each other over representation of the commercial interests in Rockaway Beach. City government can't solve this, the city council can't solve this, and I'm not taking sides. But I am concerned, though, that this feud is a hindrance to Rockaway Beach's success and will continue to limit our potential until it is resolved. The good news, the good news is that the story of the Hatfields and the McCoys shows us that deeply embedded conflicts can be settled. The conflict between the Hatfields and the McCoys ends with a treaty, a handshake, and a newly forged kinship between the families. I ask that, for the sake of Rockaway Beach, the competing organizations put the past in the past and work collaboratively to bring all organizations together. Sit down together and work this out. Consider bringing in a professional mediator. Come to the table without preconceived notions. Just be open to finding a path forward. Each side will need to be willing to compromise for the good of Rockaway Beach. If the Hatfields and the McCoys could do it, so can these competing organizations. Rockaway Beach's residents and merchants deserve and should have working partnerships that promote what is best for the commercial enterprises and the well-being of the residents of Rockaway Beach. Please set the past aside and do what is best for our beloved community. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. We are adjourned at, what is that, seven twenty-seven on Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.